Good evening. I'd like to call it to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, October 10th, 2017. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Testa, calling the roll. You're not here? Testa, are you here?
Yes, Testa.
Okay. Sandry?
Here.
Sullivan?
Going right to left. I'm here, yes.
Shortell?
I'm here too.
Servoni?
Here.
Laughin?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Laterno?
Yes, I'm here.
Onto the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve consent agenda items A through D, F, and G.
Second. Moved and seconded all those in favor of the items moved on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Onto item four. The item removed from the consent agenda is item 3E.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the grant and approve an appropriation of funds in the amount of $257,270, $205,816 to the state grant revenue fund, and $51,454 to the program revenue fund.
Second. Moved and seconded, Councilor Laterno, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this question would be to the mayor. Mayor, on the, on the state grant on Fund 215, so the money from the state is in the fund, in that account right now?
I don't believe we have the state money as yet. I believe it's a reimbursement grant, but, but upon approval, we would be able to be paying the contractor on the promise of the state to be providing that money. And then there's another, I believe it's $57,000, that's the town share on it.
Yeah, I see $51,454.
Fifty-one thousand, right. So that, that is the town share. The remainder, the 215, is provided by the state of Connecticut. And upon completion of the work as it goes along, well, we would get reimbursed by, by the state.
So tonight, what we're being asked is approve funds that we don't have?
Well, we have a promise of funds from the state and we have the matching funds. This is what we customarily do, where we have the approval of a grant and the grant has been approved and it's ready to go. We just need, we need this appropriation to be able to sign a contract with the, with the low bidder.
Okay, because the, you know, what troubled me a little bit was the verbiage that the estimated cost of the project will be $257,270, which includes 5% contingency. And I'm reading this from, from your letter, and a required local funds match. And I just want to touch on that for a minute. So how much did we have to match the state? What was the amount from the state and what did we have to match?
Rather than me. Rob, do you have the number that we, we had to match?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councilors. So the question is, our match, our 20%?
What, what, my question was, what is the contribution from the state? And so we know what we have to match because it's a matching fund.
All right. So we, we bid the project. In our low bidder, the, all the contract items are $245,018. I'm recommending, as we typically and customarily do, we go into a construction project with a small contingency that allows us to actually measure and pay for items as they're installed. We use some estimated quantities and also to account for any unforeseen conditions we might encounter. So I'm recommending a, a small 5% contingency. That gives us a total project budget of $257,270. The DEP grant we have will reimburse us, it'll reimburse us 80% of our cost up to $227,280. Now, the, the project budget, including the 5%, won't bring us that high. The 80% share will be $205,816. The town's 20% cost would be $51,454. So that is the number. And it's my understanding that all of that money presently resides in the open space management fund.
When he says all of that money, it's the $51,000. We don't have the state.
Correct. It's our 20% match.
Okay. So that's, that's what I was trying to find out. What, what percentage we had to match? Was it a dollar-for-dollar match? Or now I understand, it's not in here that it was a 20% match?
Yeah, it's an, it's an 80-20 program.
Okay, all right. And I think the other question I have is, you know, this is about a year old. It says on August 23rd, 2016, the council approved the resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant to fund improvements, da-da-da-da-da. In October 2016, the town received an award of the Connecticut recreational trails, trails grant. So it's, it's about a year old. The state back then apparently said, you're going to get the money. But the way things have changed in the state over the past year, are we assured we're going to get the money?
Yeah, we've been in constant communication with them. You know, they, they do a pretty decent job tracking that we're moving forward with the project. And, and I've had conversations with them as recently as last week, and that the commitment is still there. And when, when the Attorney General's Office signs these grants, that means the money's been appropriated. They, they have it.
Okay. It just, nothing surprises me the way.
Understood.
Things are going. And that's what I was, I was concerned about. Who actually, what department actually issues the grant? Is it the, through who?
It's DEP.
DEP, okay, all right. And I see the town share of $51,454. I don't know, I'm just, I'm a little more comfortable knowing where the money is coming from, and knowing what the percentage is. What I'm really not comfortable with this project is, you know, this is, the state is bleeding money and here we are going to make a trail. Now, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a lot of money, but you, you put a lot of these little projects together and it becomes real money. And as far as the town goes, the town share of $51,454, I know will be locally funded by the town's open space management fund, but, you know, golly, I think maybe we could use that in a different way. And, you know, that land over there is not going to go anyplace. It's been there longer than I've been around, and it's going to be there long after I'm gone. And, you know, maybe sometime when, when the economy picks up and, and what I would like to see, when the economy picks up or whatever happens to the state and we know definitively what our costs are going to be from the state in regards to budgets, maybe we could look at it again. But I, I, as it sits tonight, I just can't approve this. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Questions or comments from the public? Ms. McKean?
Hi there. I'm Ms. McKean, 13 Berkhite Drive. I used to sit on the grant committee that granted recreational trails funding with the DEP Recreation Division. And that money is actually coming from a bond. It's not sitting in a fund somewhere. It is totally guaranteed. And it's, our share at 20% is actually a pretty small amount. And I don't think there should be any reservations in granting this. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else from the public, I'll bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Yes.
Laterno?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Sandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes. Motion carries. Onto the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross, I saw your hand before I was done.
I knew where you were going with your, what you were saying. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Question to the council, or to the chair. On the charter revision, why is it only one question? Why is it not two, three questions?
That was, there was a motion presented at the time that we were considering it, and eight of us voted in favor of one question.
So if you're against, so if somebody's against one of the questions, say, they don't want the town clerk to be appointed by the mayor, and they're against that one, they vote against it, they end up voting against everything all at once.
I'm not going to tell people how to vote.
No, but I'm just saying, that's, that's what, that's what happens when you don't break them up into a few questions. So.
I believe the ballot's already set and approved.
Oh, I understand. But what, do you know what the rationale was, why you put them in one versus three, four questions?
I think the, the consensus on those, among those of us who voted in favor of the single question was that the proposed changes were generally good business, a more efficient way to run the town, and non-controversial. So I think that's why the majority was in favor of a single question.
All right. Well, we spoke about ethics at the last one. And then on this one, there is a, I have a question on, one other question on the charter. It's on removal of elected and appointed officials. You seem to be taking that out of the, well, the Charter Revision Commission seems to be taking the process out of the charter and moving it to, again, ordinance. Why?
My, my understanding of that change is that despite the fact that it was in the charter, that, that there is not legal authority for removal of elected officials as it was contained in the charter.
Do we have home, does Wallingford have home rule? Are we allowed home rule? Town attorney?
Attorney Farrell? Do you know the answer to that?
Not offhand, no, sorry.
I can offer an opinion, which is that all municipalities fall under the Home Rule Act, which allows certain authorities to be visited or utilized at the local level. But every municipality is a creature of the state, political subdivisions of the state. So the state actually could abolish all of the municipalities and the state would, would continue. So with, with that said, my understanding from the town attorney, the Corporation Council, is that there is nothing that authorize removal of public officials. There's nothing in state law, and it actually may violate state law. And that does not leave it up to an ordinance, because there's not the authority to do it at the local level in that manner, whether you have an ordinance or you try to put it in a charter. I think the town, the Corporation Council has stated that in earlier occasions when explaining the charter changes.
And I, and nothing to disagree with the mayor, but I'd have to disagree because we are entitled to home rule, from what I understand what the mayor just said. And if we, and I, yes, the state can abolish home rule. They can do a lot of things to every town, but they're not going to do it. But if we have home rule in Wallingford, that means, according to the state, the question whether the authority to remove elected officials is valid, is you can do it, because the state doesn't have a rule against it. So you can have it in your charter. So why would we be taking it out of our charter? This was a, this was a suit against the city back, that wanted to do this back in 2015.
Again, my understanding from.
As long as we have home rule.
From the discussion of the Charter Revision Commission and their inquiry of the Corporation Council is that, it was her opinion, is that the legal authority wasn't there. So it was pointless to have it in the charter.
It says here, the law is granted special, by special acts of the, of the General Assembly. And if you have home rule and they don't have it as a rule, which they don't, then you're entitled to put it into your charters as long as it doesn't go against state law. And so by taking it out, you're weakening the removal process of elected, which we don't have as an ongoing basis. And I'm not saying we do, but here, you're, you're weakening what happens in the charter. And I'm just, just saying it because it is, if you take it out of the charter, it means it's not there anymore and it has rules and regulations. We're not following those rules anymore and you're going to be up to, it's going to be weaker, because there's nothing in an ordinance right now to do it. So if this passes in November, there's no rules to remove on a elected official. And I don't think there's any in the ordinance right now. Is there?
I'm not aware.
So I'm just, I, again, I don't know why certain of these, and I have some other questions, but I know there's other people that want to speak on the charter. This is why they should have been in separate questions, so people could have picked and choose, chose.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's very easy to ask the Corporation Council, and she can provide in writing what she has stated previously, that it's not, it's not an authorized provision in a, in a town charter. Thank you, Mayor. I presume you'll, you'll do that for us. Thank you.
Yeah, because I have it here from Attorney Ross Garver, from Hartford, I guess, that, that you are. You're laughing. I don't, I assume he's a left-wing nut or whatever. That's the way. You're laughing, but they did win against the specific community on it by keeping it in the charter. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public question and answer? Going once. Oh, Mr. Stancuna.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Name an address for the record, please.
Darrell Stancuna, 18 Old Village Circle.
Thank you.
I was hoping that Mr. Boz was going to be here tonight. He gave me some information that I had requested, and I looked over it. And I'll tell you, you guys, this isn't good, okay? If you could look back at the decision of the 1% that the retirees in town that you guys passed about a month ago, you, have you, any of you looked at their income of how much they're getting a month? Any of the councilors can answer that? Did you look up the information of how much these individuals are getting a year before you made your decision?
Mr. Stancuna, I've taken the position through this term that I'm not going to allow somebody during public comment to poll the council, because it may be considered violative of the Freedom of Information Act.
Well, excuse me, can you repeat that? I don't understand, because I got the information from Freedom of Information from Mr. Boz, and you guys decided on a big decision of that 1% for three years for these folks.
I'm talking about your question tonight.
Did you look over to see how much these individuals are making a year before you made your decisions? Yes or no? It's not, you don't have to know the names or anything.
I'm not suggesting that people do or don't know the names. I'm suggesting to you that I've taken the position during this term, that I'm not going to let people during public question and answer poll the council. It's not a question on the agenda, therefore I'm concerned that it be, could be considered a violation of the Freedom of Information Act.
But it's open public question and comment, so it's not.
That's correct.
Anything in violation.
You can, you can make your comment. You can ask questions to.
You refuse to answer the question if you looked over the people's salaries?
I think I've answered the question to the extent that it's going to be answered.
Well, I'm going to tell you, a lot of these people don't even get social security. They're barely making it. There's a lot of houses in Wallingford that are being foreclosed. If you walk around different parts, all over town actually, you'll see signs for foreclosure. So I'm just telling you that if you guys could go back, look at the numbers of how much these individuals are getting. I talked to some of these people. They don't even get social security. They're barely making it. And you got future employees that are going to one day retire. Now, I just think you guys weren't looking out for them with that 1%. If you could reconsider that decision, the state budget still didn't get passed. So, you know, you didn't have to pass it neither. And then the other thing is, since you're not going to answer that, those questions, but just rethink that if you guys could, and see if you could make a better decision on that 1%. With the opioid crisis that's going on, you could type up YouTube, any song you want, and the first thing you see is someone saying now their parent or child died from opioids. So I know last time I was here, a couple of weeks ago, I couldn't make it because there was open house at Langman Hall for my kids. So it wasn't that I was just blown off the meeting. But we have a serious epidemic going on, and I just feel you're really ignoring it and trying to say that there's the answer with the Coalition. And last week, I was at the mayoral debate at Ashland Village, 8:00 in the morning, and I couldn't believe the answer from the mayor. Those questions came from me, through me, to the speaker to ask those questions about the homeless and the drug problem in town. And I'll tell you, a lot of people aren't happy with those answers. That, you know, we had a meeting at the Coalition, and they're doing a great job. Please don't twist it. They're doing a great job with the resources they have. But we need to give either more money to them, if you guys can, or they can have more appropriations to try to help out this problem. We got teenagers all over the town just walking around aimlessly. And I talked to these kids, okay? And, and they're telling me, they feel you guys don't even care. They don't. And a lot of them aren't even registered voters. I don't, I can't tell you how many kids I talked to that said they're not even registered voters. And I, and I begged them to please go to the town hall because they're over 18 and register to vote, because it's their civic duty. But I'm telling you, these, this future generation has a real bad outlook. And especially, we don't have a skateboarding park for them. We don't have, we have parks and rec, but you have to pay for all those things. What we should do is have something provided besides the Coalition, and they're doing a great job. I don't want that twisted again. But we need something like an outside park for these kids, with skateboarding, if that's an area that they, you guys could probably get. There's a lot of land in Wallingford. There's a beautiful one, you know, these other towns. So that's, that's a problem right there. I really would like to see more going on. And with the homelessness, you got all kinds of people walking aimlessly, don't know where to go. Yesterday, a woman at Stop &amp; Shop out front begging people for money with a child. So it's out there. And the answer is not that the churches are stepping up and that the problem is solved, because if we're, if we're solving the problem, well, then we need to share it with the whole world. Because guess what? It's false. We're not solving the problem. We don't have a shelter as much as the mayor said that we do. When is that shelter open? Can anyone answer that question, or is that a violation too?
Well, no. I'm aware that we have an emergency shelter. I don't, I'm not specifically aware of when it operates, but I know that it continues to operate.
How can you sit up there and not know when the shelter's open?
I don't pretend to know every detail about this town, how this town runs.
But if you're the chairperson, you should know what's going on with the homeless and when the shelter's open. And I think you do.
And I thank you, I thank you for telling me what I should know.
I'll answer it for you. And the mayor answered it last week, that we have the shelter through those questions. But you know what? It's not good to put the wool over the public's eye. That shelter, all you know this too, everybody up there knows this, that shelter's only open during winter months. Okay? You knew that. It's only open during winter months. You got people hanging out the library just to, you know, do something to stay warm when it does get cold. But what are we doing and providing for these people that aren't making it and that are on the street, that are losing their houses, don't have money for food at Stop &amp; Shop or these stores? What are you guys doing, except denying, you don't even know when the shelter's open? I mean, this is, this is bad. I'm just telling you right now, it's very bad. I have a big, you know, plan for you guys. Hopefully I'll win. But if I don't, I want to see you guys do something for these people. For the retirees, for people that are homeless, that are losing their houses, that don't have food. And the shelter's only open winter months. So, and then number four, back to the bands. Yeah, the Twilight does a great job playing the band. We had a great time over the weekend tasting Wallingford. But I'm telling you, a lot of businesses are hurting. We can't rely on Wallingford residents as an income only. We got all kinds of companies and businesses that are beautiful and that a lot of towns don't even know about. So that's why I'm trying to say, bring in some big bands. Bruce Springsteen wants, maybe just once for the summer, try it out. Just try it out. If it doesn't work, at least you could say, hey, you know what? I, we tried it. Bring a big vendor in. Try it out and see if that does make a difference. And if the income of these local businesses, Craig Jewels, Knuckleheads, and Archie Morris, these other restaurants and businesses, see if it does lift up. And if it doesn't, don't do it. That's about it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, twice. I close the public question and answer period, and onto item six, which is a report from the Park and Recreation Department on the community pool. We have Mr. Galak from Park and Rec, and some members of the commission coming forward, and they have prepared a presentation for us. And so we will proceed with that. Good evening. If you could just identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening. John Galak, Director of Parks and Recreation. To this side of me, Dave Gilo, Chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. Mike Savanelli on the other side of me, the Vice Chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. And Michelle Bjorkman, the Superintendent of Recreation.
Thank you. Your lens cap on your projector is closed.
I think there's a switch for the, yeah, on the other side? No, it's up, is it up front, on the side? Wait a minute.
It's coming up. Might it be helpful if we dim some of the lights behind us so that the public can see what's on the screen better? Wow.
Okay. So over the last two years, I've been making the town staff, the town council, where the community pool is aging, and it's going to need repairs and improvements in the future. Two years ago, my department had requested $200,000 through the public works budget to sandblast and repair the pool bottom and paint. The report that I'm going to be going through with you tonight is just a bit of a historical timeline along with the current state of the pool. Let me be clear that while I speak to the findings and ideas that I've come across this summer, I'm not making a recommendation at this point. The report represents. The report represents a lot of time pouring through minutes and old pool files from 1990 to the current. This information here is from the town's accessory card. Where it's located, the property is seven acres, pool size, the pump house, the bath house, the land value, et cetera. Pool renovation on the card says from 1998, 1999 is $1.7 million. The only other thing that was done to the pool since then has been a roof replacement, 2014 for that price. Timeline. The pool was first constructed in 1948. According to the records that I reviewed, it was a swimming hole created by a brook on its way to the Cunybeack River. Spring of 1960, the Lions Club launched a drive to raise funds for a new community pool. The fund drive fell short for a conventional pool. Local engineers got together, developed a plan for the first generation of asphalt pool. 1999, community pool was renovated because of a decade of algae blooms, poor water quality, and a pool bottom that needed desperate repair. Pool committees. Second generation of community pool went through eight years of discussion, great debate, through two pool committees ranging from 1990 to 1998. I went through reams of documents, council minutes, community pool committee meeting minutes and notes. The first committee, led by John Walworth, Steve Knight, Bill Chody, South Falconeri, Charlie Johnson, who was the, the Park and Rec Chairperson at the time, and Stan Shepherdson, the Director at the time, delivered an Olympic pool style, which greatly reduced in size the current pool from 1 million gallons of water to 300,000 gallons. Two options were presented. They are over on the easel, but we can go through those later. Actually, in some of the designs that I've received from some current companies, which we'll learn about later, that committee had some vision. There's some really nice designs there, the two that they had presented at the time. But as the notes say, due to other town fiscal priorities at the time, and the general public not wanting to lose the zero depth feature of community pool, the project wasn't pursued. In 1994, the Friends of Community Pool was created. Leading the way was Karen and Ben Foster, Joanne Bean, Amy Humphries, Betsy Bates, Frank and Bernadette Renda, Dick Guyton, Jane Wazniewski. The group was very diligent in their work to find a solution to preserving community pool, and the biggest feature was the zero depth. Their work led to an eventual bid approval in 1998 with a base bid to renovate at $1.9 million. Going back to the 1991 study, it revealed that the bath house, while in relatively good shape at that time, the facilities were significantly undersized by the 1991 health standards, while not immediate enlargement of toilet and shower facilities should be planned for the future. That was the recommendation, but it was not a design consideration in 1999. So, the bath house that you have now has not been upgraded or updated for many years. Community pool, third generation since 2000, is when we opened it up. The bath house is outdated. While it's still functional, feedback has been to update and bring to current building and health standards. The Connecticut State Swim Codes indicate one shower per 50 bathers, male, female. Based on the size of the current pool, the number of bathers allowed, it would be 1,720 people at one time, resulting in 17 showers for each male and female. Currently, our average on the high end for day trips is 300 to 500 bathers. The 500 number is skewed from our visits from the various day camps that we have, that go from the playgrounds to the pool. Typically, this year, we average between 250 and 300 daily visits. So, based on that, our shower facility would allow for 800 bathers, the current facility right now. So, it's, it falls within line. The pool bottom, as you know, has had a storied history, very long history. Appealing paint, floating paint chips, creating an annual need to scrape and repaint sections to the entire pool. Just about every year since it opened up in 1999, Public Works handles that. Rec Commission also pulled out some figures. Mike, I don't know if you want to talk to that, itemizing just for the sake of 2017, what it would cost to operate the pool.
All right. I have a copy of this. Would you guys like a copy to follow along? I'll just give it to you two on here?
Sure, thank you. Hey, Michael. Good buddy, how are you?
Thank you. Well, we took the time to do some cost analysis, and we were trying to determine what it costs to keep the pool open on an annual basis. And what I did, I worked with the Public Works and all this, everybody involved with the pool to come up with the total expense per year, which is about $142,000. We sold 1,960 tags in 2017, with the income was $32,520. Our approximate loss was $109,414. The pool is open 60 days roughly, on average, per year. And the cost per tag, if we had a break even, would be $56 per person. And I'll tell you, when we went from 10 to 15, there was a major uproar. The average cost per day of operating the pool is $2,365. If you look down on the photo IDs since 2012, we're down 52% in attendance. Basically, we just kind of put this together to give you an idea of where this has been going over the last five years. And the question keeps asking, you know, people, "Why aren't people coming?" And it's a good question. But I do know that the, the ongoing issues with the pool is part of the problem. But I'll open to any questions you have on this.
Why don't we just keep on going, and then we can come back to-
We'll save questions till the end. Thank you.
Community pool, third generation since 2000. The pool pump house vendor that Public Works utilizes has indicated the current state of the pumps of the pool are in pretty good shape, as they are 17 years old. Meetings with town staff, Parks and Rec Commissioners, Public Works, Risk Management have occurred in November 2015, November 2016, at the pool to discuss necessary repairs to keep the pool operational and safe. My last two budget cover letters also reference community pool as a future improvement project that's going to need future funding. The Rec Department, through Michelle, had surveyed pool tag holders in 2015. So, we just started charting in the course for repair, replace, or repurpose of the property, 2015. Along with the visits, Michelle had conducted a survey. The main response from the pool users, not the community, just the pool users, was that the update, the bath house needed to be updated. Open the pool from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Stop the paint from peeling off the bottom. Add a slide and a splash park feature to the pool. Something fun. Earlier starting hours from 9:00 AM as opposed to 11:00 AM. And just as a footnote, I had my office manager run some numbers. Mike had said that the pool was open this year, depending on the calendar, it's between 59 and 61 days, roughly nine weeks. If we were to add the Memorial Day to Labor Day, it's another 44 days. So, with chemicals and the operation of the chemical house and staff and custodial, it'll be an additional $70,000 to operate the pool. So, according to Mike's figures, it'd be the 149.9 and just adding another $70,000 to it. I just added some photos. This is the photos of the peninsula on the north side of the pool. The concrete coping has been failing just about every year. Public Works does its best to try to secure it and keep it intact. Just some various views of the pool deck on the north side, east side, pool painting, peeling. Pool tags. Since changing the pool tags to photo IDs at the recommendation of the department and the commission back in 2012 due to the drowning, the pool sales had experienced a steady decline from approximately $5,300 in 2010 to 1975 this past summer. Been averaging for the last five years, only 2,400 tags. There's a chart. Community pool passes by age and by year, to kind of give you an idea, the children, the teens, the adults, the seniors, the non-resident two-week pass, the non-resident season pass. Total number of passes just the last five years for that average that I had just given to you. The commission, yes?
I know there's questions to the end, but just, just quick on those numbers. You're showing us five years. You mentioned that since 2010, it went from 5,000 plus down to 1960. But, this looks like a, kind of a slow decline. Was there a time where it dropped dramatically in the prior five years, three years?
So, it did. So, Michelle, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think in 2012, we had close to 4,400. So, it was, it was a dramatic drop. It was almost 50% instant once we went to-
I was just wondering because-
-photo IDs.
When we, oh, so that's when it was?
Correct.
All right. So, 2012 was the photo IDs, and that's when you had a dramatic drop?
2013 is the first year with the photo IDs.
Okay. So, that was a dramatic drop, and then it's gone a little steadily down?
It's continued.
Okay, thank you.
Trends continue.
I'll let you go on.
I just have a quick follow-up for that. Was that the year that we stopped a lot of the out-of-town sales as well?
2013. Prior to that, we didn't allow any non-residents.
Right. But I mean, so did it start then, or did it stop at that point?
Non-residents?
Yeah. What, are we still, are we still selling to non-residents?
Through family members, yes.
Through family members?
Family members and friends.
All right. So, I, I guess the reason that I'm trying to make my point here is, there was a lot of passes sold prior to the photo IDs, that there was a lot of out-of-towners that were coming because there was no way to identify.
Correct.
So, there's a, there's another reason for that drop.
Correct. So, as a commission, community pool's been just bantered about at just about every one of our monthly meetings at Park and Rec. So, in keeping with everything, in March 2016, I have another handout. Mike, if you- We took a field trip and spent half the day up at South Windsor. They built a park, they, they built a pool, redid their pool in 2002 on a 16-acre parcel. South Windsor had a million-gallon asphalt patuminous pool similar to our pool. Renovation included three separate tanks as opposed to the one pool, and they converted their asphalt pool to concrete gunite for a total of coverage of 34,000 square feet. They added a lap pool, all swim, diving well. To the adult pool, there's a 40-foot swath that has zero depth entry to have that feature. They created a toddler pool with an 80-foot zero-depth entry that has some manual water toys, which were pretty interesting to see. They did a very nice job. Mike just passed you along the fact sheet of, of their pool. Very nice complex. In late May of this past year, I had called TLB Architecture, Chester, Connecticut. They're the design firm that was hired by the town of Wallingford in 1998 for the 1999, 2000 renovation of the pool. I have another handout to kind of give you an idea of all the different types of municipal pools slash splash pads, parks that they have done in the state of Connecticut. Their master plan services typically cost up to $22,000. Their proposal would include aquatic park programming, master plan to evaluate the best use of the town's asset, including not only the pool and related structures, but also the balance of the park to determine non-aquatic programs that may accompany the site. They could complete a master plan with, within three-month period. Moving along, in June, we met with Savoy Pools out of East Hartford in Weston and Sampson, Rocky Hill, Connecticut, that does their design. Their project manager from Weston and Sampson, from their cursory inspection of the pool, provided two complimentary site schemes. To improve the pool and bath house, the schemes provide a look into keeping the lap pool, adding a splash pad, wading pool, lazy river, and a new bath house. The cost estimate for either one of their schemes, including those components, is in the neighborhood of 4.2 million. Just to give you an idea, this isn't, it was just to kind of get us a, a jump-off point, if you will. This company's design and master plans fees typically range up to $10,000. So, if we went to an RFP process, one company is $22,000, this company is $10,000. We don't know what it would be if we were to venture that. So, I do have those two drawings up on the easel as well. That larger drawing is the current community pool in the winter to kind of give you an idea. And then we can take a look at those other designs. But when you compare the designs from this company, which, you know, it was just a gentleman's kind of idea to give you a concept versus what the folks did in 1991, in my humble opinion, the 1991 design hits it out of the park versus this new design. In late August, I received a phone call from a gentleman from Murtha Pools. They're based out of Boston. He was down at Yale University for a few days to speak to Yale University officials about replacing their pools. The rep is also a Park and Rec Commissioner with the town of Wellesley, Mass, where he spent four years with that town and ended up being Murtha Pools resurrecting their new community pool. Because of his experience and passion for the pool business, he ended up getting a job with Murtha Pools. So, he introduced to the Park and Rec Department this technology referred to as renovaction, that essentially puts a pool in a pool, adding a 25-year warranty. The system greatly reduces the annual maintenance by eliminating water and chemical loss. Murtha has over 20,000 commercial pools in operation. They installed one of the renovaction pools for one of the pools in the Beijing Olympics recently. They provided a rough estimate based on our pool size, the square footage, keeping the integrity of community pool and the zero-depth entry for about 1.5 million. Now, all these are just basic estimates, just to kind of give a range and give some ideas to things. But this does not include any improvements to the bath house. So, I do have what this renovaction technology looks like, if you care. Mike could pass that up, and you guys could take a look at it. So, he has three things. There's a stainless steel plate. So, pools that are of your conventional Olympic-style pools, instead of redoing the pool with concrete and reconstruction, there's stainless steel inserts, inserts, that has a vinyl coating on one side that's to the pool side, and basically rebuilds your pool. The two rubber pieces would be for the zero-depth entry part that we have now. So, one of the pieces would go down, insert like you would do with a flat roof, with a rubber roof. It would go down right on the bottom, right over what we have now. right over what we have now. And then a textured finish on top of that. That's the technology there, but it can be done. So it's just yet another option of when we were looking at all the different possibilities for community pool. I made a call to CCM and asked them if they would do a survey of towns within the population range of 30,000 to 60,000. So this is what they called and what they brought back to me. You could see the population column, how many pools that each community has currently. Do they charge fees? Do they not charge fees? You could see that some do not charge for residents. Fee schedule, seasonal, whether it's daily or seasonal, of the season. Wallingford, like I said before, is about nine weeks. It gives us about 59 to 61 swimming days. And you could see what the current schedule is for some of those other communities with three of them less than Wallingford and three or four that are more than Wallingford. Information gets a little skewed after that. Some people don't take care of the attendance. We take care of attendance, degree days, daily attendance. I don't have those figures in that chart, but we have them at the office. Pool fees, same town surveyed, resident, non-resident. Kind of gives you an idea of what's happening. We're not too far from the ranch with our adult fee of $20. Matching end fields, close to middle towns, a little less. East Hartford, I don't think, charges their residents. You could see some of the other towns that don't charge their residents. Torrington does, Glastonbury, 75, Merritt, and so on. Some other pool fees, pass options if they have, if they offered them, and then swimming lessons, which we also provide swimming lessons through our guards. Just to kind of wrap it up, since that's the end of the slideshow, I did, back in 2013, it's not part of this because it's not part of the pool project, I did do some studying of splash parks. 2013, we had some residents that were very interested about pursuing it. I worked with a couple of companies. I did a survey through Connecticut Recreation Parks Association, received a lot of data. I even had a splash park created. Mike could be so kind to pass it up there one more time. This splash pad represents just a 2,000-square-foot footprint and it roughly prices out at about $160,000. Keeping in mind, our pool is 43,000 square feet. Our gymnasium at the school at the Park and Rec is 11,000 square feet. So you could fit five of those. One of them for $160,000. So they are pricey. I did do a survey, like I said, the one at Lighthouse Park in New Haven. They're a larger one, which is about 8,000 square feet, retailed back in 2008 for almost $300,000. So they do range. There's many options. I know, and these guys can speak for themselves, but at our last meeting, the Rec Commission, while endorsing this report, had also, if there is or it comes to a time where there is a pool committee, that these gentlemen are part of that core group. Do you guys have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. I just want to start, I was at the pool probably once a week all summer. My kids and I were the last ones out, the last day. We had a lot of fun. It was a great, it was a great time. So maybe I may have some bias here. I'll just put that out there upfront. My first question is on slide 17. I just want to, I'm questioning a number. You have the percent of the population?
Yeah, again, CCM put together this data. I don't believe that that's accurate.
Yeah, it looks, it's double, it's not unique visits. It's, okay, because the percent's like, I think, 4% actually used, if you do the badge divided by the top, okay.
So we sold 1900...
1960.
60, 1975. I got to get the exact number straight, but looking back at the daily numbers, Michelle, it was probably about 250 people. Like I said, when we bring the playgrounds there and our summer middle school group there, that number does inflate. And we do run some fitness programs there also. And again, with the swimming lessons, so it does change a little bit.
Just to get the chronology down, because I was also, I was also there the day of the drowning. That was like July 3rd, 2012. July was that weekend. I mean, he's buckly, the boy survived.
Correct.
It was, so that was the impetus to go to photo IDs, correct?
Correct.
So that, that's where you see that in the slide before Counselor Testa was talking about. Then in 2013, you start seeing the big decline.
When we mailed out the new policies that fall of 2012, when the commission voted on going to a photo ID, I had an envelope pile on my desk that you could press it down. And when you press it down, it was that kind of a stack of just non-resident or undeliverable mail that was using Wallingford addresses.
Right.
So at that point, we just said, "Photo IDs."
So my question is tied to, it's kind of a little bit off, but as far as the parking situation there, because I remember back before that point, you would drive down, you'd have cars on North Main Street Extension all the way up the hill. So my question is...
In Beaumont Road.
Right, right. So if we did something and put something better in there that, and figured out a policy, I mean, if you build it, they will come. I mean, that's evidenced by what happened before 2012. Do we have the parking to support this? We need to expand that lot? I'm just curious because it just felt like back in those days...
Not being an engineer and not knowing the site well, I wouldn't feel comfortable answering that.
Okay.
If you take a look at the 1991 pool study though, where they cut the pool basically in two-thirds, there's more parking there. Maybe Michelle can... That design, the 1991, there's two of them behind those two smaller ones in the front. You could pass those around and take a look. Yes.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense because it, yeah. My next question, and I should know this, in our 18 budget, what do we, do we have something, do we have at least the routine? Or what's budgeted for 2018? Do we have the 146 budgeted or whatever it takes to keep it going, or do we not have that?
So that 146, we have... So my department does the programming and staffing. Public Works handles all the maintenance end of it. So from my department, yes, we do, for the, for the staff.
For the staff?
For the staff. Public Works handles the custodial contract for the cleaning of the bathhouse. They handle the pool chemical pump house. They handle the chemical purchases. And that is their staff and time for maintenance of the pool when we, Michelle gives them the date that, you know, we need to drop that date of opening, you know, to maintain it, paint it if it needs to, purchasing the paint. I believe that that comes out of all their various supply accounts or maintenance accounts.
Could I, Mr. Mayor, is that, is Public Works for 2018, do we have that in their budget? I'm just curious at what we budgeted. I don't remember if we have that.
I believe that they have budgeted a similar number as passed, so that if a portion of the pool had to be painted, they have the ability to do it. But we're well aware of some structural repairs that should be made along the edges of the pool. There's an identified leak as well. They do a system to save the water and kind of recirculate it, but there is definitely a leak in the pool.
Right. Thank you. From a, I guess from a marketing perspective, what, what have we done differently? So the thing happened in 2012, but as I think Counselor Testa pointed out, or Counselor Zandry, the number still declined even after that. I think it was 2,500 in 2013 and then 1960 this year. I think we changed the hours. I think we shifted the hours a little bit. I know that they, it opened later this summer, I think, or last summer, or was it always been, it was open until 7:00, I think.
So it was always 11:00 to 7:00.
Oh, was it always 11:00 to 7:00?
This was my 33, 33rd summer.
Okay.
It's always been 11:00 to 7:00, except for a year ago, we did try and we went 10:00 to 6:00.
Oh, that's what it was, okay.
And received a bunch of backlash that, you know, the people that do work all day, they get out of work, by the time they get home, gather up the family of themselves, get to the pool, we're asking them to leave.
So you went back this year, back to the old, that's what it was, back to the old schedule, okay. Is there anything else that we've done in the, you know, from a marketing perspective, from an operational perspective, to, from a process perspective? Any other changes we've made that would maybe make it easier for people to get to the pool or, you know, I know, we talked about this before on the Broken Record.
Our facility is open seven days a week till 10 o'clock at night for people to get the photo ID. There's no other town department that's open seven days a week to get that. So I know that people would like some sort of an online registration. They would like a daily pass at the pool. But honestly, I don't want to get into a cash handling business at the pool for the daily passes. And then it's, are you a resident? Are you not a resident? You know, there's, at least at the office, we could flush all that out. People have the appropriate pass, photo ID, non-resident two-week or season pass. And when they go down to the pool and they present it, the pool people know what they're dealing with without to get into any of that other stuff without maybe exploring hiring more people, which that's probably not prudent at this point.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think... The cash handling aspect, I mean, we, was there an incident or something? I mean, there used to be a concession stand there, right? I mean, that was cash. Was there ever, was there something that happened that would make us...
Cash was done by a private vendor. The concession stand was a private...
That was never the case.
So it was never, it's never a town function.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you hit it on the head though. I mean, I think people, I would like, I don't want to speak for anyone. I mean, I think it'd be easier to be able to go. I mean, I can buy, I could decide tonight I want to go watch a movie. I could buy the movie ticket online and by the time I get to the Wallingford Cinemas, I could watch the movie. You know, I don't have to go to another place. I get your open seven days, like you said. I totally respect that. I just think that, that doesn't help in today's day and age. I also think you wouldn't have to handle cash. I mean, you could do things on your phone. There's PayPal. There's all sorts of ways. I mean, at Celebrate Wallingford, you'd get a steak sandwich using a credit card. So I think you, there's got to be a way we can make that work. I don't know, at the pool. I think that, I think that could help. I mean, I think you guys do a great job. Don't get me wrong. I've been there every day. I'm not trying to be critical. I'm just trying to be honest though. As a resident, it, you know...
We're open, we're open to suggestions.
Well, I guess that's...
Talk about it every, every month at our meetings.
Right. And I think that's all, you know, I read your minutes. We get, you get your minutes. I'm always, I've been reading your minutes since I got up here two years ago, and so I'm always waiting for the minutes. I can't get to your meetings because they're 8:00 a.m. But, which I don't get, but we won't get into that. But, so I've been following this for a while and being a user of the pool with my kids, I've been, you know, very concerned about it. And I guess I would just, I know we have people here, there's no action tonight. This is just a report. Nothing's going to happen tonight. But it's good to get, you know, people talking about this. My hope as a citizen, as a counselor, is that we're just creative here. We look at every option, whether it's this footprint, a different footprint, maybe we, maybe we do have to have an honest, tough discussion about that parcel. Maybe the future of that parcel isn't a pool. Maybe it's a sports field. Maybe it's, it's something, I don't know. I just think you have to be open-minded. And I'm open-minded to anything, but one, except for one thing, what I'm not open-minded to is that we just, you know, close the pool and I have to drive by it for the next 40 years, because I don't want to do that. And I understand, you know, with the state situation, I am not in a hurry to spend money, but at the same time, the state's never going to be in a good situation. I mean, I mean, I can't imagine a time in the 10 years from now, we're going to all feel great about the state. So I don't want to be paralyzed by that forever either. So I just hope we have some creativity and we clearly do. You did a lot of work and I think this is a great start. But that's my own personal hope as a counselor and as a, as a citizen. So I appreciate your work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, folks. So I want to start by saying thank you very much for putting all this together. I know this has been a hit or miss thing. John, I must have called you five times over the summer trying to get some information from me and get this, get this on the agenda because I had quite a few people asking about it. So...
Appreciate your patience. There was a lot of time in formulating all this.
And, and I told, each time that I got approached about it, I, you know, a couple of people got, you know, a little upset. They were concerned. We were, they were getting a runaround. And I tried to explain as many people as possible, "Listen, I'd rather get all the information, deliver it once, then maybe come back, you know, budget time for other things that we might have to discuss." So I, I appreciate running the risk of upsetting people to get them as much information. And this is a ton of information, so it's great. I do have a few questions and I know other counselors do and I know folks, you know, out there that came for this are going to as well. So I want to try to make my stuff real fast and then maybe if I have any follow-up, I could come back later. One of the, one of the questions I do have was kind of what I jumped in a little bit before when Counselor Testa opened it and then I wanted to get a clarification just because I had it right in my mind. I know we moved away from out-of-town residents to the point where, like you mentioned, we had a whole stack of envelopes because people were using, you know, town, town addresses for the purpose of skirting the rule when we had little ways to enforce it. So I guess fundamental or maybe a rudimentary question, but rudimentary is probably a better way to ask it. Why do we not want to have out-of-town residents there? And the reason I ask it is because it seems like all these other pools all over the place, all the ones you gave an example, and our neighbors to the west in Cheshire, they, they allow anybody that wants to come, even on a daily rate at a 50% uptick to go to the pool. Why do we not want to do that?
Never, we, we could do that. We've just always been, for all those years, a resident-only pool.
All right, and, and it's fine. I mean, that's, that's a justified reason. It was just a decision. It was made every year. So I guess maybe in, as a part of this conversation, you know, I look, I look at one of these other pools that allows out-of-town residents, the South Windsor one. I mean, they're really close between their operating budget and their annual revenue. And actually, I want to make sure I'm looking at this the right way. Annual revenue of 329 and they have a budget of 357. That means they're, they're right there. You know, a little tip one way, a little of not losing any money each year. They may make a little, they may lose a little depending on the year. And I'm sure a lot of that comes from, and they run, again, I want to make sure I got it right here, right, Memorial Day to the last Sunday of August. That's effectively Labor Day. And so it's a longer season. And, you know, we've dropped, we've dropped quite a bit. I mean, and again, and using, using the Cheshire pool in a way is a bad example because they've got a much larger facility. It's indoor and it's a lot different. But they, they have huge rates for annual passes per person, per family compared to what, if we could get the, the attendance back up to about 4,000 people at $55 a single pass for the season, you'd be breaking even on the extended schedule going, because I took your numbers, your current budget, and I added. Now, $55 and you've already mentioned it, you went from 10 to 15 and a lot of people complained. I'm not suggesting you make a jump like that, but I think people would, would have an understanding that if you went from some, some formula from $15 a pass to $25 a pass and then some calculation for, you know, a family of four or whatever you might have to do. But here's what you're getting. You're getting a longer season. You maybe you're getting an extended hour or two at the end of the day if you're... And I have to agree with Counselor Shortell. I think some of this is a condition of if you build it, they will come. And, and, and a lot of these, a lot of these facilities that you mentioned have all been either recently refurbished or refurbished within the past 10 years. And I think a lot of times people do, they come by, they look at the facility. It's old, it's rundown and, you know, we really have to make a decision as a town what we're going to do with this. And to me, I went there as a kid. And the only reason I stopped going as a kid is my family got a pool in the yard. The only reason my kids don't go is they spend the entire summer over in Poland. But I would tell you what, if it was open at Memorial Day through the time they leave the last week of June, I would buy a pass even for the shortened schedule because I know they'd go and swim. So I mean, it's one of those things where I really think we need to look at what we have. I I really think we need to look at what we have there and and ways to make it. So that people will want to come. And and again, maybe part of the solution is to expand. The program to the point of. Of allowing out of town people coming and and charging them a surcharge. It's what these other pools do. And I and I guess I've been looking through up to upwards of fifty percent and some people are obviously paying it to go. And and you know, the even the daily pass rate with with the Cheshire non-resident one, nine dollars for a youth, thirteen dollars for an adult, nine dollars for a senior. Some of the feedback I got from some of the some of the folks that contacted me on Facebook. And again, this goes back to, I don't know what it would cost. There may be a way to tier the tickets even. If you're going to do normal pool hours, I believe you said eleven to seven, is that correct?
Correct.
If if you ran a two hour segment that also extended from two to two from seven to nine. An adult swim from those hours and charge those people with those kinds of passes, the extra money to do it. I mean, it 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 if we can sell more passes and get a little bit closer to a break even or less of a loss, especially if we're going to be considering doing a renovation. I I I think these are all things we need to consider.
The the later hours, we need to watch out because then there's it gets dark with the tree canopy that's there on the north side. There's shadows. So you could probably get. What, maybe eight o'clock, eight fifteen? Without it being an issue or a. Encroaching a safety issue. And then the other part of it is is becomes budget. You know? Do we expand the budget to cover the extra hours?
Well, that's why I said find out, find out maybe through a survey or or during budget time, you know, we can we can put it out to the residents. Hey. If you want Park and Rec to consider. Extended hour and a half, let's say, for an adult swim. Which would which would in theory require. I don't want to say less supervision, but you're not dealing with kids, which is your primary concern during your daytime hours. I'm I'm sure with the with the lesser, you'll know too, be because you'll have to have these people with having purchased a. You know, an extended pass. An estimation of how many lifeguards you might need for people that might come late. And if it's if it's a nonstarter, then you don't do it. But I mean, I I think there are creative solutions to to try here and and. And much to to Counselor Chortel's points, and I don't want to belabor them too much. There's got to be solutions for the day passes because there are people that will come and pay a premium rate. I mean, I mean, again, I I'll use I'll use my sister's probably getting tired of me using her as an example, but if she was visiting from out of town because she doesn't live in town anymore. She had the opportunity to buy a day pass to come with me and my kids on June tenth. She might do it. And she'd get knocked for thirteen dollars but would pay it to go, but she'd have to be able to pay at the gate. There has to be a way to do it if all these other towns are doing it. So. You know, again, I I just want to throw these things out there. And I also I also just before I wrap up and pass it along. You know, I know that, you know, some of the price tags we saw. For some of the possible renovation considerations were. Somewhere between two and four million dollars. I want to remind everyone, the the prior ones that you did for us here in Wallingford were about one point nine. One point eight from. Nineteen ninety nine.
Correct.
I want to remind people that's twenty years ago. You want to tack inflation on. You're about ballpark. For, you know. What it would cost. So it's one of those situations where it sounds like it's a big price tag. Differential from way, way long ago. It's it's the cost of change over twenty years' time as well. Plus. What you're getting. In difference to things that were proposed before to things that could be done today is very different. Because the 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 construction technology is different. The ability, some of the items that were passed along the bottom with the aluminum and everything else, those things weren't even available. Twenty years ago. So these are these are other things that we can consider. So again, I I want to finish up. I I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and all the research. I'm I'm glad to have all the materials available. For us and as well as to the public. So again, thank you very much.
Sure. Mayor. Just in response to the question about why not non-residents, I heard at various times. Two other things, one being. The issue of. Younger people, children not being monitored. Basically being dropped off, creating concerns over safety, et cetera. And the other being if we do not have sufficient parking. That creates its own problem. So then the issue is, well, a resident doesn't. Have a chance to visit the pool when they want to visit because there's no room left for parking. I know both of those have been voiced at various times and. We we need to keep those things in mind. Thank you. Counselor Laffin.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody for for being here tonight and for the in depth report. I think we should start maybe with the the Record Journal's headline should be Town Pool Not Shutting Down. I don't know what else we could say. To kind of make it clear that that's not been happening with, you know. Backroom deals and cigar smoke filled rooms and everything. Again, thank you to the to the commission members, the chairman and the vice chairman that have come here. Obviously, it's important. Again, a priority, and I hope the people in the audience and at home and that read the newspaper or read on Facebook see that it's a priority and this is a big deal. And we have the director and the assistant director and everybody says important. And and Councilors Andrew talked about creative solutions and Counselor Chortel had some comments to it, and I agree with them too, but I also. I know that we have a very good and very strong and very active public. Sorry, Parks and Rec Commission. So I kind of defer. To you guys is is you figure out how to move forward and what to do. And I just want to offer. My support in in going forward with that. And if there's anything, if there is anything that I can do or that we can do to let us know. And that we as just by this being on the agenda, we're all clearly in support of doing something. Renovating, changing the plans, shaking things up a bit, whatever it's going to be like that. Even if it includes, you know, town parking preferences, you know, everything. I mean, it's just. I I trust we have. We have a good group of people on the commission. And, you know, and I see I know seeing those minutes and I don't read every one of them. But I know a lot of care goes into a lot of ownership. There's a lot of ownership that comes from that commission. On our fields and parks. So. I think it's important that we we understand that there is people that really care about that involved in this. And at the head of it. And that's for the people at home. I had a couple of questions just for my own. I was just curious. It talked about the life of the pumps being it was they were currently about about seventeen years old. What's the full life of the pumps? Do we know? It said it was good.
I don't I don't.
We don't have the. Okay, I was just curious. If there was a longer life than keeping, you know, doing the the rubber thing might. We won't have to replace all the pumps either. Just jumped to my head. How much extra land is there? Is there a way to repurpose any of that to add fields to add additional use or then it gets into messy? They got people parking there for different reasons. They're climbing over the fence for the pool. It's easier to just block off the entire thing. And I haven't been there in quite some time.
But there's the. Engineering put together that map. Obviously, it's a little dated because Beaumont Road, you don't have the new dialysis place there, but. In any effect, you can get an idea of what is available in the back. It's tough because as you go in the back, the duff that back traffic circle. The property kind of goes to a point.
Yeah.
You have the brook there and wetlands on both sides because we look to expand. When we were having parking problems with all the parking down Beaumont Road on both sides. We had gone to planning and zoning to try to at least get a gravel lot so that we could put staff cars in the back and it was. I can't remember. Remember, it doesn't serve me correctly if we got approval for that or not. And we never went after it. But there's not much land back there.
Okay. The the wetlands thing is something I guess I wasn't receiving. There's a map in front of you, too. I think that matches I'm looking at on the floor here. Okay. And then another thing I was just curious about the the age, the primary age. Source and availability of your lifeguards. I mean, that has to be a factor. And all this as well and why you're picking eleven to seven or you open after college gets out or you close before college gets back. Is that how many high school versus college kids you guys? I'm just curious on my own.
We have approximately thirty lifeguards on staff.
Okay.
But they're part time. So they they can work a maximum of forty hours a week. I would say the majority of our. Lifeguards are probably high school and college age. Our supervisor are are. Professional teachers, phys ed teachers and high school teachers. So once we lose a good core group of our college students at the mid to end of August, we're short staffed. We certainly could look to maybe downsize the amount of pool available to the general public. And open it up for an extended season and maybe just have sections one and two open.
Okay.
With five guards on a day versus eight rotating throughout. But we do have a, you know, a good amount of college students that come back. We've had returning guards for many, many years.
Okay, yeah. No, thank you very much. And and again, and that that's all my questions for now. A lot of what Counselor Counselor Chortel and Andrea had asked. Have been have been touched upon. But again, thank you. And and I know going forward, obviously, there's going to be a lot of discussion, but. You know, you have my support anyway and. Doing all that. And thank you again.
Sure.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for your report. I was just thinking about the availability of. Our ways to get information from the public. In other words. My suggestion would be here that you do your best to survey. Survey people. Find out why they're not coming, what they're looking for. And, you know, at one time that might be difficult, but. I would think you could very easily put together a Survey Monkey. And blast it on the website and the town site and Facebook, whatever. You might be able to get a lot of information. Because I'm sure you 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 question yourselves all the time. Okay, why aren't people coming? What happened? As as well as what are they looking for? And you can imagine, just when the topic is is brought up on social media. There is a plethora of ideas out there from people on what we should do, what they'd want to see, what they want to have. But it's I think it'd be pretty easy to get all that information with one. One online survey through and serve. I mean, I'm always doing these Survey Monkey things at school, at work. And, you know. Cheap and easy and you could probably. Potentially get. Tens of thousands of answers, at least certainly thousands of answers. That's one thing I would just offer as a suggestion as you go forward to answer some of the questions. We can all have ideas here. But my question to you is pretty straightforward. What would you like to do? What is your suggestion? What is your preference? Do you have a recommendation? At this point of what you'd like to see? And when I and I ask that question with the caveat to please do not consider. Cost. And I don't mean that flippantly. I'm saying let let. The town government determine what's possible and what's not. What if if money was not an object, what would you want to see? Done? You're the experts at this.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Just there's just too much information out there.
All right.
You know. Everywhere I went this summer, it's why did you close the pool? Why are you closing the pool? What are you going to do to the pool?
Yeah.
Just this information, what we what I pulled together from this summer was pretty extensive. I think at this point, the next step would be to. I'd like to see some sort of a committee not go through the eight years that the other people went through. Because what I have here is a good jump off point, a good starting point. And maybe start developing what we can do if we have the money. But, you know, what's the prudent thing to do with it? Obviously, we need to. Make sure that the pool is operational and safe for the next summer. That's the first thing.
Correct.
So we'll be conducting another field study, another walk in November to go through what does the pool need? All the concrete coping. Does it need to be painted again? Some bathhouse fixture needs, things like that. But to get back to your original point. I I just think that there's there's too many ideas out there. There's too many things. I'd rather abstain right now.
Well, that's I I can respect that. And it's actually good for the public to know. Not only are you not recommending that we close community pool. You're not even to a point where you are ready to make suggestions about what you'd like to see done. So that I would hope that that would put a lot of people's minds to rest. I was of the impression that we're nowhere near that. We have a ways to go. You brought up the issue of or the fact that it needs to be addressed. We need to start looking at what to do long term. While you continue to decide how to manage things short term. Two different issues. But again, I think all that information that would help you. Come to certain conclusions could probably come to you with a townwide survey on this. And people feel like they're participating. Might bring that up again. But then then I'm I'm sure you're going to. We're going to get together again. With some suggestions or perhaps your request that we we do put together a community. Committee, Community Pool Committee to to handle that. But.
I think we're at that point.
You're at you're at that point?
We're at that point right now.
Is that what you would like to see? You want you'd like us to appoint a committee?
I would.
Okay. That's good to know.
I mean, there's a lot of opinions out there.
Oh, yes, sure. Lots.
Very hard to decide through.
Yeah, I mean, and 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 we could all come up with an idea what we think would be appropriate and what would work. But so maybe we at some point, we need to start talking as a council about. Maybe putting a committee together, I would assume, because that is something that you're requesting. Because you're you're at that point where you're you're not. You're you're not going to come to us with a recommendation.
Not right now.
Not right now. You're going to give one to a committee? You want to be a part of that committee?
We're going to be a part of the committee.
How do you see it working? How do you see it working? You'd like to, as you're coming to, let's say, you're as you reach, as you're as you're trying to get to that point. Where you can make a recommendation to us, you would prefer that those deliberations, that activity, that. Project, if you will. Involve others. Along along with you.
Oh, yeah.
So rather than come to us with an idea and then. Oh, that makes a lot of sense to me.
We'd like to have, you know, a little bit more of a broader section of the community be a part of it.
All right.
The other pool committees, but, you know. It can't go the eight years that the last one did that reading some of the 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 documents that I read for nine years worth. It's amazing we got to where we're at.
Well, that's easy to fix. We, you know, we have a pretty good record lately. We get committees to get their work done in a relatively short period of time, so. All right, so that I I have a good idea of what you would like to see done next. So my questions are complete. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank all of you.
Thank you.
Counselor Letturno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's it was fun listening tonight to, well, first, thank you all for for all the work you're doing. But it was fun listening tonight to all the comments on the community pool. And looking when it first opened in nineteen forty eight. What it was. And. I did. I did. But I'll get to that. Thank you. We were my family was one of the first out of town users of the community pool. We came from Meriden. There wasn't many swimming holes back. When I was a kid, my dad put us in the car. I'll never forget. It was a summer, July summer of nineteen fifty eight. He took us to community pool. I said, Dad, where are we going? We're going to Wallingford. White Wallingford. He says, they got a great pool down there. And what it was, they dammed up the 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 brook. We got out of the car, went over to the pool. My brother looked at me. I looked at him. He's three years younger than I am. Dad, why is the water brown? Well, we jumped in the water. We had a ball. We were just kids, eight, nine years old. And we came back many times to the community pool. If the water was the color as of this desk, that was a good day. By the way, that was that was pure pure swimming weather water. But watching it evolve through the years. And. The fun that people have had there. I have great memories of it. And I'm sure other people do, too. And, you know, I would like to see future generations use this pool. And, you know, I would like to see future generations use this pool. And I think what you have in some conceptual drawings is a good start for this. And I think the planning process that you're going through and the work that you're putting into it, it's a great process. And I agree with you. I don't want to see nine years, I don't want to see eight years. We have a habit in Wallingford of putting it what I call on the Wallingford clock, where, you know, one year is equivalent to one hour. So, I mean, it's, it's a slow process. We studied a golf course, I think, for twenty-five years and Community Lake for another twenty years or twenty-five years or something. So, you know, and with you people at the helm, I'm confident we can get this, you know, maybe a year or two, move it along, get some public input and move it along. The condition that the pool is in now, you know, how many more summers are we looking that it's, it's, it can be used without, before we have a problem? I know there's been problems with the bottom and maintenance issues and paint flaking and all of that, and that's been an ongoing problem for a number of years. So what are we looking at, you know, in that? Is there, you know, are we looking another year or two before it's non-swimmable?
I started two years ago. We'll have another meeting this November, that'll be three. That's all I can tell you. I have no idea what, how it deteriorates and what Public Works, what's within their capacity to take care of what's there now.
Okay. So is there, you know, other counselors that voice this? Is there anything that we can do on the council to expedite this, to maybe institute a workshop with Public Works and you guys? And, you know, I just don't want to see this thing linger for years.
We'll have another assessment in November and we could report out from there and just see what it is.
Okay, so you can come back to us in November sometime after the meeting and report out?
If need be, sure.
Okay, okay, I think that'd be good. One of the questions that I don't get many questions on the pool, but this summer I did get a few inquiries about it. And one of them was the lack of a concession where people can buy food. Any thoughts of maybe not getting into concession, but how about a food truck down there? Maybe putting it out to bid and letting a food truck bid on it?
So we have the last vendor, bless you, created some serious issues. We've worked with other vendors that, you know, once you prepare a bid and they get upset that Domino's is delivering, Hometown is delivering. For a while, when the pool was first open, we didn't allow food inside the gate. When two thousand eight came, the economy was tanking, you know, people wanted that option of, you know, can we have food inside the gate? So we listened and we acquiesced and it happened. And that particular vendor was not happy because he saw his sales drop. And then it was always blocking at the fee that was in the bid. You're a businessman, make your product good, make it look good, market it, maybe people will buy it. He reneged the next year. We got into another vendor who, after he was awarded the bid, wanted to change the scope of the bid. And the health sanitarium said that you're making this a restaurant-grade type of concession, you need extra wash stations at your cost. Fought with us, so we just ended the contract. So at that point, we haven't gone back to, you know, it's been three years, haven't gone back to the concession part, so. Something that we could look to bring back.
So what happens now? People go, they can, can people, restaurants deliver?
Restaurants deliver.
People can bring their own food?
People bring their own coolers.
Okay.
What if you went to the beach?
Well, you know, I know some of the beaches do have concessions and some don't, you know. I know years ago, Wharton Brook used to have a concession when it was heavily used, and that went away when it's, when their population of people using it stopped.
I'm actually looking to put out a mobile concession bid for the parks and probably looking to maybe do something at the pool. We've been in discussions with some people.
Oh, that's good, that's good. All right, thank you.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much to the committee for your report. I'll be brief. I have a lot of fond memories of the pool, too. I have some concerns about how the town is changing demographically in terms of, I see a lot more private pools now certainly than there ever was when I was a kid. So I guess I'm sort of in line with where Councilman Testa is as far as, I'm not sure what the demand is for the pool. You know, perhaps nineteen hundred is because the pool's in the condition it is, or perhaps that's all the maximum number of people that actually want to use the pool. Are there any private companies that manage or run municipal pools that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, but Public Works maybe.
I would just be curious if that would be a potential means to save some money if we could farm some of that out potentially. You know, I'm sure Public Works does a great job.
You're talking about the chemicals or the whole staffing, lifeguards, the whole bit?
All or any portion of it.
Because right now, Public Works does the pump house chemicals and the operation of the pump house and the pumps is done by a private vendor.
Okay, so part of it is private?
Correct.
And then the lifeguards and all that, we do ourselves?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Beyond that, this seems like a tough time to be talking about spending any money. You know, I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention tonight, and I think a lot of hard work went into this. This seems like a really rough, particular time to talk about putting money into the pool based on some of the other things that are going on economically. So while I'm almost never the guy that wants to kick the can down the road, on this one, I think I'd rather wait and see, you know, how the state budget situation works its way through before we, you know, start talking about putting together a committee that may never get the funding to do anything with the pool. So you guys do a great job with the pool now. You know, I know people complain about the condition. I think the pool, it's certainly usable and it certainly looks great and the staff is great, so I think for now, we just need to keep doing what we're doing. But I thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Counselor Fishburne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would expect that a portion of the lower tags could also be attributed, well, first of all, thank you for coming here. Very comprehensive presentation. We'll go back to our lesson. You know, the short season, I think, would have something to do with a lower amount of passes. I know in my house, we had that discussion this very summer, the beginning of August, should we go get a pool pass? No, because season's just about that. So we didn't. So I think that might have some relation to the reduction. Whenever I see a splash pad, which the thing that you passed out, very large splash pad, is it being thought about to replace the pool with a very large splash pad or as an accent?
We're just gathering data.
Okay.
It could be a part of it, could be all of it, could be an accent. I mean, there's just so many options.
Yeah, it's a finely crafted mosaic is basically what you end up with. But, you know, just from my perspective, I don't think a splash pad by itself will meet the needs of our community.
I would agree.
If, you know, it seems like there's clamoring for a larger season and more hours. Memorial Day to Labor Day seems like what people talk about in nine to seven-thirty-ish the hours. How would you staff that? Because you're using college kids presently, and you wouldn't be able to do that for that whole thing.
Just to touch on one point that you just brought up, in my tenure here, twenty-two years, it has always been, not that it has to be this way, but it's always been fifty-nine, sixty days the pool has been open. So I don't think that's a reason why there's a reduction in pool passes. I could be mistaken, but that has never changed in twenty-two years. Regarding the staffing, that would be a challenge for us. I know other communities do it. We would just have to be a little more resourceful. We might have to go back to our, we used to train guards in the months of, you know, January and February. We would pay for their certification and they would guarantee us a season of lifeguarding. So we might have to go back to that. We are fortunate enough to have thirty guards on staff. Not all of them are getting forty hours. Veteran guards usually get forty hours. Maybe grooming a younger group of kids, you know, bringing in the sixteen-year-olds, training them throughout the course of the summer, having them stay on, and then stay on till Labor Day, once our college students go back. I know other communities do it. Once, I had mentioned before, reducing the size of the area that they're allowed to swim in. Instead of having all three sections open, just break it down to two sections. So there's options that are available.
Okay, thank you. The, has it been considered, just sort of along the lines of what Councilor Marone was mentioning, you know, we have property in town that's owned by the town, but others utilize it, others lease it. You know, I know, like, the YMCA has been wanting a ten-lane pool. Has it, has there been thought about private-public partnership along those lines or with them or some other group?
No, or just beginning.
Okay, so that's something that might be discussed in the future.
Sure.
And with regard to the committee being put together, I think a committee, you know, if you're asking for a committee, I think a committee should be put together because I'd rather have that instead of dealing with it back ended, dealing with the funding at the end. Certainly, the discussions need to be had whether the pool continues or doesn't ultimately. And that committee would have something to do with it, funding or lots of funding, so. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan.
Well, you know, I wasn't gonna let an opportunity get by. Thanks for the presentations. I know we're miles away from making any decisions on the pool. You've already answered one of my concerns, where are we for next year? And it seems like we're gonna do an assessment and it'll be up and running. I'm not closing the door on this. To Counselor Marone's point, we don't know what the state's gonna do. And of course, having a pool is a wonderful thing, is it a necessity? Maybe not. But certainly, there may be room to improve the pool we have. And I'm not gonna try to pin you down tonight on concessions or hours or costs. But what I would ask is, if we do appoint a committee, and I think it's a great idea, I like the Survey Monkey, and that's probably something a committee could initiate, but I would like a business model at some point. Choose the pool, show me the business model, show me the costs, show me the maintenance, show me the hours. Because hopefully, we can have this pool almost pay for itself year over year. And I know you do a great job on programs at the Park and Rec, and a lot of your programs pay for themselves, and you charge a certain fee. So when you come, when we reach that point where we have a proposal in front of us, I'd like to see a business model with it, too. That's simple. We know the pool is on life support. I think everyone in town knows about it. You know, Facebook has its pluses and minuses, and believe me, I've seen more minuses around the pool. Because once someone puts something out there on speculation, it continues to roll and then it becomes a fact. So I'm glad tonight we set the record straight that I don't think there's one counselor up here that's looking to close the pool completely. But I think people watching this broadcast also understand the economic duress the state and the municipalities are in right now. And down the road, there may be a way to pay for something, but it all starts with the proposal, putting a committee together and bringing a plan forward with a business model, so we have an idea where we stand. And then we make the determination. And maybe instead of one proposal, there's several proposals at different levels of costs. So we have several options rather than one. I don't want to put all the eggs in one basket, and it only makes sense if we put a committee together that they come up with more than one proposal. So I'm gonna make it quick. I'll just say thank you. I know the Park and Rec does a great job. The commission, I know all of you on the commission, and I know your dedication to the Park and Recreation Department of this town, the people in this town, so I appreciate the time you've put into. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Having let everybody go before me, I don't have a lot. One of the things that was discussed is opening up to residents from other towns. And I am not principally opposed to that. If it, if it makes sense, if it puts us in a position where the pool is closer to self-subsidized, closer to some, some type of enterprise, my concern is where tax dollars, by my quick math, tax dollars are subsidizing the pool by seventy-eight percent or seventy-seven percent. You know, I'm not sure I want to confer that benefit to non-residents. I think if we're seventy-seven percent subsidized by taxes, then maybe it is a resident, resident-only situation. But I'd certainly be open to the concept if we could somehow, you know, to Counselor Zandry's point, if you can take advantage of the opposite of a preferential rate for a non-resident and people are paying this and we have a pool that's more of a net zero in terms of operation, that's something that I would certainly be willing to consider. So thank you for this report. As others have said, it's been very comprehensive. There's a lot of information here, there's a lot for us to digest, and I understand that you were in the process of digesting it. And I suspect that at a future meeting, we will discuss the appointment of a commission if that is what you feel is appropriate for going forward. So thank you very much, and at this point, we'll hear from the public. Mr. Morgenstein.
Good evening, Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. Just to the commission, I was looking at page eleven, and it jumps out at me, when you look at the demographics, how few youth, thirteen to seventeen, and then even the seniors, and it only goes back to two thousand thirteen, but has it always historically been that low compared to other populations?
Yes, it has, actually. It's predominantly a preschool and mom or dad facility that we're catering to at this point, just, and I attribute that predominantly to the zero-depth entry. It's a safe pool for the kids to enter into. There really is no draw, I don't believe, for a teenage population to be going to community pool. We do get a few kids that come with their parents. They have to be a minimum of fifteen years of age to be there unattended by an adult. But there really isn't a draw. You know, we have some tubes and noodles and stuff like that, but for the most part, there's no slide or activity or, you know, splash pad or anything like that.
So my thought, what that is, is that in terms of that population, if we're to think about reconfiguring and what will draw people in, that would be a population that we could possibly look at, what would be an asset to bring in? Especially in the summer, you want kids to have activities, is certainly at that age a healthy activity, so that would be something to thought. And then the same thing with seniors, is there a reason why that we don't have more seniors utilizing? So that's just an observation and a thought for moving forward and looking at this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back, you had your hand up? Please come forward in your name and address for the record.
Good evening, John Walworth, twenty-eight Morowa Drive in Wallingford. I'd like you to consider some of the items I'm gonna bring to you in your deliberations. One axiom is that the one thing we don't learn from history, or the one thing we learn from history is that we don't learn from history. We have a facility there that is a million gallons, of which four hundred thousand gallons a day are treated, and yet that pool portion is not even open. We have a facility that accommodates seventeen hundred bathers, and yet we have parking for sixty-five or eighty cars. Imagine a facility that actually was smaller, not too small, but small enough to accommodate the largest number of swimmers you could imagine, and yet have a larger parking lot that now has a balance. and yet have a larger parking lot that now has a balance between the number of swimmers and the facility that can accommodate to park cars. The state of Connecticut has very rigid specifications as far as how this pool needs to operate. It needs to have a separate toddler pool because toddlers generate about three times the bacteria of an adult. So you need to create special spaces that meet rigid specifications in order to pass their requirements. One of those specifications is that the poolhouse, as you had heard, needs to accommodate a shower for every individual approaches the pool. They take that number based on the total square footage of the pool and the ability, what area it's accommodating. So if you made the pool smaller, you don't need a big, a larger poolhouse. So all your costs, the cost of filtration, the cost of lifeguards, the cost of everything go down as your pool goes down and your parking lot goes up. Now you have something that is enduring, attractive and safe. We had another death, from what I understand, this pool years ago, where a child tried to crawl under the chain link fence that separated the adult from the child section and unfortunately became impaled and, from what I understand, died. So what I, I implore you, just as some councilmen had suggested tonight, you really need to be committed to that large number that is necessary to build this to a quality specification before you ask a committee to spend hundreds of hours like Committee A and Committee B. Committee A actually came before the then-council and the mayor with a number that was around $2.7 million. And as the other axiom goes, do the right thing and do the right thing right. So in fact, that had a facility that was balanced in cost and specification and the like. But it was rejected because there wasn't adequate funding due to some new schools online. Right now, we're in a worse condition than we were back then. There was $2.9 million and we had some issues for financing. Now we have a horrendous issue with financing. So be prepared, the mayor and the council, to commit that kind of money before you have committees spending hundreds and hundreds of hours doing surveys and the like. But I do invite you to look at the initial design report that went with that. There was a survey of 1,000 people and what they wanted, what was on that design. Things change slightly, but don't recreate the wheel. You've got, from all the studies of other towns, you have enough information to really roll with this, to have a number come before you without spending hundreds of dollars, I mean, tens of thousands of dollars. Be aware, do not be caught up with low-ball numbers. The second committee was told they could fix the pool for 250 or maybe it was $500,000. Came out to be 1.9. Do not be swayed by numbers from master plans at 25,000. The design of this facility will be 10% of the construction cost. It could be 200 to 400,000 dollars. It's not an easy project. And we have all learned that a municipal pool is one of the most difficult types of projects to obtain support for and funds for. Do not make this a more protracted avenue than it needs to be if you're not going to commit the money to it. Thank you to John and Michelle, but in fact to our volunteers, to Dave Gilo and Mike Selenelli for their time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lu.
Thanks, thanks for having me. It's Jared Liu. Thanks, Mr. Sponey. Let me start off by, 59 Curtis Avenue. Let me start off by thanking Mr. Galak, Parks and Rec, for the efforts they've put in. I'll actually echo some of the same comments that Mr. Walworth did and start off also by thanking the countless hours that folks in town have put into not just this effort, but countless efforts in town. We are fortunate that we have a really committed, dedicated, talented force of folks in town. I want to reframe the conversation a little bit. I think this would be a very different conversation if this were currently generating revenue. I think we'd have a full slate of people up front here talking about every single way to stop this from losing money. We'd say, let's take care of this thing that not only is a service for this town, but is currently generating revenue. Well, when I listen to the presentation, when I look at some of these numbers, you know, different ways that we can look at this, but essentially, eight years ago, this pool was generating revenue for this town and offering a service for Wallingford. So over the last eight years, we have failed to maintain this pool to the point where it's now losing money for Wallingford. I hear the conversation up here and I would actually be a little concerned if I were someone at home watching from television, if I were thinking about what the future of the pool was. What I hear is we're going to push this further down. We're going to keep studying it. And I hear time and again that this was the state. I hear the state's in financial trouble. We shouldn't be making any decisions right now. Well, it wasn't the state that stopped us from maintaining the pool so that we're in the state that we are now. It wasn't the state that rejected plans for concessions, rejected plans for advertisements, rejected plans for how we improve this pool. It wasn't the state that told us that we had to force everyone to come to Parks and Rec in order to get their photo ID taken, to get a badge. It wasn't the state who told us that we could only accept cash or check. So let's turn the lens a little bit back on ourselves and take a little bit of leadership here. I'm going to commit that we are going to have a community pool and that within eight years, if it took us eight years to get it to a point where we're now losing money, within eight years, we're going to get it back to generating revenue. So I do encourage everyone, starting from the mayor, to take some leadership on this issue. Thank you.
In the back.
Hello, my name is Leslie Williams. I live at 595 Woodhouse Avenue. I also have community pool stories. My kids are now 17 and 21. I've written my last check to Park and Rec for Weber Ball this year. It's a very emotional time for me. But we spent many a day at Park and Rec and at the community pool. And that was when there was concessions, there were craft activities for the children and the parking was horrendous. But we just made do. We parked on Beaumont Street or whatever we had to do. One of the things that has not been brought up, I think, is that when my, I was buying pool passes for $5 for everybody in my family. So it was $20 for the four of us. We also got to use the Shein pool in the winter. And that was a great advantage to that. You had pool access all year. And I don't really know anything about how the Shein pool is paid for. But the only people that, as far as I know, get to use the Shein pool are the Shein students, the Shein and Lyman Hall swim and dive teams and the Y because they do their races or whatever it is. So that's not open to a very large section of our population and I think that's something that we missed out on. But the community pool is horribly important to the town. I think a splash pad would be an excellent, excellent idea because so many times we would show up in the late afternoon and get sent home because a toddler pooped in the pool. And that is a problem if you've gotten all your kids into the car and driven across town. But, I mean, that happens at every pool. So I just want to thank Park and Rec for all the work they do. And I'm guessing that the times that I was there was the heyday with the craft people and the ice creams and everything. But I hope that there's a way to bring that back to Wallingford.
Thank you. Gentlemen, yes, you. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Stefano Fasulo, Cardinal Drive. Just out of curiosity, when you folks talk about feedback and the feedback collected, what was the methodology in, in collecting that? How did you do that?
What are you referring to as far as the feedback? The, the survey that we had put out in 2015 was just to the users of, of that particular year.
That was a survey electronic?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, of the folks that are tag holders, the 2,840 that you show on, I think, slide 12 or 10, what percentage of that was the survey response?
Do you have that, Michelle? I don't have it for you, but I can get it for you.
Okay. I, I'll be honest with you folks, I have no tie to that pool whatsoever. I'm a resident of three years here in town. But developmentally, growing up, I have a lot of ties to Park and Recreation, so I tip my hat to you. I also tip my hat to you because I was a part of a multimillion-dollar renovation at a university in New York. It lasted years and went from 9.5 to 11.2 million dollars. So I echo what folks have said about your work. I also feel your pain with having all these thoughts and all these ideas. If, if it's at all worth or value in putting a committee together and giving this a thought in terms of what we have at our disposal here in town, both as the human capital resources and financial resources, to look at this as a go-ahead in terms of collecting ideas, looking at different contractors who work specifically in this field. For example, what would be the turnaround time for a construction of Project A or Project B or Project C and taking those things into consideration? You talked about switching from 2012, in 2012 to 2013 to ID passes. Is there a different system out there? For example, I know that certain institutions have systems in place, particularly higher ed institutions, where their incoming class can send a photo in in advance. That's the cut down on lines and you talk about having a, a Park and Rec open until 10:00 PM. Or if you leave it up to the user to submit that photo, then what you're really tasked with is when they come to the window is prove that they're the individual with a different form of ID and then you just print the card. The work's already done on their end. So there's a lot of different things floating out there and that's why I, I really sympathize with what you said earlier, is that there's too much going on to commit to any one single idea. But as a, a now resident and, and with a, a family and having grown up in a system of utilizing Park and Rec originally where I'm from, having an outdoor pool has been a huge component of my upbringing. And, and I implore everyone to think about moving forward with direction. I echo some of what Mr. Liu said, if I'm saying that correctly, sir, with taking a hard step forward with direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jamie Heine, 342 South Elm. You know, I, I admittedly don't use the pool all that much. I've been there a handful of times. But to me, I, I think the, there's some very, I think, obvious issues there. One is you have limited hours, you have a limited season. You don't sell day passes. You can't buy a pass at the pool. You have to go somewhere else. I, I mean, those to me are just obvious, obvious issues and, and it, it limits somebody's desire to, to use the pool. Because if you have to go through all that, why would you do that? Especially, you know, my, my wife, a couple of months ago, brought my son to the Cheshire Pool. She was not a resident. She was able to go to the pool. She didn't have to go somewhere else first. She went to the pool, she paid for a day pass and he was able to join his friends o- over there and have a good time. You've got to make it easy for people to use if you want people to use it. And I think, you know, just those four or five issues that I just raised are the reason why people aren't using it. And what I would suggest is that if this is, if this is going to be a multi-year project, then we should be testing out some of these things in the meantime. You know, we should be trying extended hours. We should be trying an extended season. We should be offering day passes and allowing people to buy passes at the gate to see if it works. And so, you know, if, if this is going to take a couple of years, let's, let's try, let's experiment a little bit to see what's, what works in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? There being none and this being the last item on the agenda, Counselor Fishpein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, looking at the data and going back to slide 11, talks about the amount of pool passes that are sold by age. Do you also keep track of how many times people of a certain age utilize the pool pass? Because I think that would be more relevant. You know, because an adult might buy a pool pass but use it once. But a youth might buy a pool pass and use it 30 times, which I think is more quantitative data than we would need.
We do not. Facility like Cheshire where it's an all-year-round facility versus the seasonal facility the community pool is, they have a computer system with a card swipe. So you can get any kind of report or data that, that you would need to, to get those types of answers.
So when somebody accesses the pool, somebody doesn't record a number, some sort of ID off of there? Just that they have a pool pass? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else from the council?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize too, in the crowd, we do have Jason Michaels and Phyllis Murray. They're the other members of the Park and Rec Commission.
Thank you for being here. Do you have any other comments about your pool report?
No.
All right. Then there being no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Counselor Letourneau, seconded by Counselor Fishpein. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.